I don't wear a watch anymore to keep gaining time tomorrow. No matter what kind of watch I wear, it gains time.
This one has a GPS built in.
I kill all batteries.
Okay, now that's seven o'clock. Good evening, we'll begin our meeting with Pledge to the Flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, by liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if the council's had a chance to read over the minutes in operating statements from last month, whether you've inclined or have a motion to object or to approve them, if they read them?
I make a motion that we approve the operating statements, September 22nd, 2014 council meeting minutes, September closed session minutes, October 6th, 2014 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for August 2014.
Have a motion to accept, we have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Notes, motions carried. Okay, next on our agenda, we're going to go right to the Carroll Media Centers here tonight with us, and we'll have Ms. Marion Ware come up and address us.
Thank you, it's been a little while since I've been here. I want to thank Mayor Jones for putting me on the agenda so quickly. I thought I was going to do it next week, but then John called and moved you in. I think it's because you have a very busy meeting, but I'm grateful that you put us on. So tonight, I have with me Jeanne Lewis, so Jeanne is from, she's a husband and NAACP, but she also sits on our board, she's a chair for the Friends, and she has done numerous projects on the Oral History Project. So I'm just going to have her come up for a couple of minutes, in a minute, and talk about the Oral History Project. Because I have a kind of funny story before I start talking about the woes of funding and the cable franchise contract. And that is that when I was first here, maybe 18, 19 years ago, I came to Union Bridge to talk to people probably about funding, and I was talking about all the wonderful things that we did and all the wonderful things we could do, and this was before we built the building down in Westminster. And so we were trying to kind of galvanize support here in Union Bridge. And I had worked with Perry, and I knew that people were interested in using the station. But when I was here, there was a little lady in the audience, and she raised her hand, and someone recognized her, and she said, "Why should we give any money to a place that has canceled doing the Box Lunch Talks?" And I think we actually had, because we couldn't get somebody to do it, to help us do it. And after that, I did get people to do the Box Lunch Talks, and we went on to do a documentary for Lehigh Cement, and we went on to work with Perry, I think, in doing a grant at that point, that supported, I believe it was the Crosswalk or the Light, it was talking about how much traffic there was and the dangers of not having appropriate safety measures in place for the town. So I think since then, we've done quite a bit besides the meetings, which I'm sure you're very familiar with, but you all have really been great in terms of giving us volunteers, students that come through the career in tech, lots of very ardent people that want to talk about Union Bridge and the history of Union Bridge in particular. I think there's, the Box Lunch Talk next week is about Union Bridge, sort of pre-Lehigh Cement. So, we now have a relationship, but we also have a contract, and I think you've probably read the letter that my board sent to the mayor and to all the council members concerning the franchise contract. And this franchise contract is for 10 years, it's a very long contract, and it basically provides the majority of our funding. And it's now four years being negotiated by the Cable Regulatory Commission. You all do have a representative that sits on that board. I'm not really sure that the representative knows much more than I do in terms of the franchise contract. So I'm here tonight to bring my concerns in terms of us figuring out how we can go forward and what Comcast will negotiate in terms of PEG, which essentially, right now, I think one of the biggest threats is the municipal channel, Channel 23. We worked very hard to get this many years ago, because one of the things that they were supposed to do initially was actually to give every municipality a channel. That didn't happen, but we do have this channel that we share, and we provide the services. So I'm hoping that at the retreat for the board, that we'll draft a letter that basically we're asking you to send to the CRC that supports the amount of money that it will take to upgrade the facility. It's not cheap, it's a lot, but it's serving a lot, and there's every expectation that if Comcast funded us the same now as they did 10 years ago, we would have the money. We would still have to negotiate with the county in terms of a low-interest loan, but that's what we did for the building before. So we're hoping that you will support this effort, and I'm here today to answer any questions you might have. The board meets this Friday in terms of their retreat and strategic plan, and at this point, they don't even know from the Cable Regulatory Commission what our budget is, or what it might be, or where the negotiation is. So, we need to at least be included in terms of where they are and what they intend to do. I want to bring up Jeanne, just to talk a little bit about the Oral History Project.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Mayor, the Oral History Project, as I said, and you will see on some of the things that we are doing, is truly my heart. We have collected over 500 oral histories of residents of Carroll County. We were given the Maryland Preservation Award in 2012, and there were people from all over the county. Sykesville, I don't remember exactly what their award was representing, that they had done in Sykesville, but it just does my heart good. History is so important, and the Bible tells us that if we don't know our history, we're doomed to repeat it. So it's really great that everybody knows their history, they have an access for it. Currently now, a project that the NAACP is working on, and your mayor has been interviewing for, it's called African American Trailblazers, and it will air in February. So that's one of the things that we've done. We've also done, two years ago, we did the March on Washington. We've had someone in our organization that documented the history of Robert Milton School. And it's wonderful to have this organization that's here that we can come and use, and anybody can be a volunteer to be trained, to use the cameras, or to do interviewing. We're always soliciting people to do that, and thank you.
Thank you. Jeanne, or Marion, I remember back probably about year 2000, at that time, Mayor Jerry Johnson from Manory was doing the, what do you call it, Centarians?
Yes, right.
And I know he did a lot of work on that, and there was a video, nobody's aware, that he'd went through, Jerry Johnson interviewed people from all over the state of Maryland that had lived through three centuries.
Right.
And was that video available anywhere, do you know?
I think we do, as far as I know, we still do have that. I think you bring up a very good point, because it's not just collecting the histories and having the histories, it's also the archive, which is another piece that we're, we actually are writing a grant now. We're hoping to be partnering with Frederick to get money to archive, because a lot of these older tapes, Senator, Daddy is here tonight, he was on, if you remember, Channel Three Local Origination Channel with Jay Grable doing a lot of the history and a lot of history of Union Bridge. And some of his tapes, we were just talking, they were in three-quarter. Most people don't even remember what three-quarter of each tape looks like, right? But all of that needs to be transferred over, and we need to transcribe it. We're working with Enid Pratt, actually, to hope that we can also get that archive partnered with the state program. So, good point, I need to look to find it. But we have people like Jerry Johnson that you'll never see except on those tapes against...
I know he did a lot of hard work on that, and one night in MML meeting, he was sharing some of those, you know, the, well, actually, at that time, they had several people that lived at Carroll Lutheran Village, had been through three centuries, and it was interesting to hear these people talk about what they've been through, like from the 1900s and 2000s and...
Right, and we're now trying, we've started, we've just started a project on documenting the farms of Carroll County, so we're talking to farmers. I saw too, you have someone that is 101 or 102?
We have a lady that's 104, Mrs. Wright, that she lives, she lives in Carroll Lutheran Village, but she's from Union Bridge, so...
Right, so those are the kind of things for the oral history that we want to keep collecting, we want to work. So are there any questions in terms of the franchise, or me explaining how it works, or, the majority of the funding is through the franchise contract, which means it comes through the subscriber fee on the bills. Now, Union Bridge has a small subscriber base, but that's why you have that little revenue report in there. So we do projects that you request. So this meeting that's coming up in December is a programming meeting, and we certainly hope that one of you, sometimes Perry comes, sometimes Don comes, but anybody can come, you can send anybody that wants, that has ideas around economic development, promoting your town, engaging your citizens, supporting grants, all of those, we need to hear from you in order to be able to serve you. You get much more back in terms of if somebody's engaged and using us, you should be using us. You do a lot, so I mean, Perry's always very proactive, but...
And just thank you, you did a great job for the fire company for their big rig rescue and their anniversary.
Right, and anniversary, did that a couple of years ago.
But they, last year, we did the big rig rescue, they didn't have a volunteer, but we, we had a volunteer from the fire company, videoed it, we sent it down, they edited, it was on TV, and it was, it was, a lot of people saw it, because it's the only big rig rescue this side of Mississippi, so...
Right, right.
So it does, and we appreciate it, because as of this year, you're the only press that we get. We have nobody from the Carroll County Times that comes to our meetings, and when you come and you tape our meetings, it's the only time that people of Carroll County gets to see what Union Bridge does at their council meetings.
Well, and I think that's a really important part, because I think one of the meetings that I was really impressed with that I came to was after you got back from MML in the state. And I know at that time, there was a lot of controversy about, you know, paying local, local officials paying to go to Ocean City, right? There was this kind of pushback in terms of the money. But to hear people here, local people that are concerned about the local community, stand up and talk about what they've learned, to me, was inspiring. I mean, really, it's inspiring to me. When you see local people that are really concerned about their local community, and they're willing to give their time, because you certainly don't get paid very much, do you, to be here late at night? To me, those are the kind of stories that I, that's why I get involved too, because I think it's really important that people see that.
I think it's important that the citizens know that when the council people go to Ocean City, they're not going there for vacation.
Exactly.
You know, if you look at the agenda we get with all the meetings and everything, convention is not a, is not a vacation anymore.
That's right.
You go and you attend the meetings and you bring those, that information back, and, you know, I know, you know, you can dedicate your daytime there, but then, you know, in the evening, evenings after like 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, what you do there, if you decide to go to, and which I do, I go to different functions with political people down there, but these people go with their families, and, you know, so, that two or three hours that you get in the evening is not, nothing compared to sending meetings 10 hours a day, so.
Right, and just to...
And it's good that citizens know that.
It's great, because even to start to learn everything that a person who is a citizen gets on the council and then needs to know, you know, and needs to figure out, I mean, I think that's...
And it's the best networking you have. I mean, going there, whether it's Ocean City, or I went to Annapolis a month ago, and I, you know, I feel that, I feel that any town that does not send their council people to Ocean City for that convention, they're wasting their council people's time, because they're not getting the knowledge and the networking that they need in order to do their job properly.
I agree, I agree. So my hat's off to you, and I just want to say one more thing, which is, I think, the citizens and the ability for people to speak, and on record, the transparency, to be able to tell you how they feel is also a very important aspect, that we don't always celebrate, and sometimes it can be aggravating, but it's certainly democracy in action, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marion. And before I forget it, again, I do want to acknowledge that one of our visitors in the audience here, we have Senator Joe Gidding. Joe, I'm sorry I didn't mention you earlier, but not, you know, I spoke to you when I came in, so I didn't forget you, but you have anything you want to, I know you've worked with cable for a long time in different programs.
I just came over to say hello and to offer that if the voters see fit to elect me in the upcoming election in two weeks, I will have a new area of responsibility, and I look very much forward to representing Union Bridge in the Maryland General Assembly. Every 10 years, our legislative districts are redefined under our constitution. The census occurs in, last one was 2010, two years later, new districts are adopted, and this is the first election when the new legislative districts will go into effect. And so my current district, which is one-third in Baltimore County and two-thirds Carroll, primarily Westminster, Finkspur, Hampstead, Manchester, and Silver Run, was reconfigured, and my district comes entirely within Carroll County. Basically is from the Mason-Dixon line down to Route 26, Liberty Road. So in addition to the area I represent right now, I will take on an area of Tawny Town, Union Bridge, New Windsor, down to Woodbine area, and it's, it's a little bit similar to when I served in the House of Delegates. The district was entirely within Carroll County, but it was the, it was the eastern two-thirds of Carroll County. I think it was unfortunate what they did in redistricting to our delegate districts, and it is the reason Don Elliott did not get reelected, they completely obliterated his district. I know a lot of people were upset about that because of the strong West Carroll district that we have traditionally had in the Maryland General Assembly since the 1980s redistricting. But I look forward to representing this area. I was moved from Judicial Proceedings Committee to Budget and Tax Committee at the last session. As Mr. McGuire knows, I enjoy greatly being on judicial proceedings, because it handles most areas of the law. But on budget and tax, I think I'm in a better position to help out the municipalities of Carroll County, to help out the county as a whole, the Board of Education, and everything being equal, I anticipate that if I'm reelected and you go back in January, I will still be on budget and tax and able to help you all out. So after the districts were drawn, I did, I've been, you know, networking in the new district. I had sort of a meet and greet reception at the Butterberg Inn last year, and Councilman Cutzel and Councilman Conway came, and last week, I had a similar thing in New Windsor. I appreciate Councilman Wenz coming to that, and look forward to working with you all in a new legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I didn't address you correctly as Senator, but...
No problem.
We go back so far that, you know, it's like 30, 35 years, and back in the day, Joe had black hair and I had hair, so, you know, it's been a long time we've known each other, so, thank you very much. Okay, getting down to the mayor's report, before I forget it, Trick or Treat will be October 31st, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Anybody who wants to participate, have your porch lights on, and I think right now, mostly all the towns are going to have Trick or Treat the same night and pretty much the same time, so you shouldn't have much problem with kids going from town to town to town, because they do their own towns. You'll have kids that live out, say, Union Town or out in the country, that'll be coming to the towns, but other than carloads coming from Westminster, Tawny Town, you shouldn't have that problem, because everybody has it about the same time. We will be, I will be attending the Valley Awards next, next month down at CMC. Got the invitation for that, that's always a very nice affair every year, so I will be going to that. Under my report, that's about it, just to say, we did have a, in case no one's aware of it, we had a young person that was camping out at the dugouts at the community center for several nights. He was living in there, and last week, we got that problem solved. I kept going back and forth, I finally caught up with the young gentleman, got ahold of his family, and he is back home now, so that problem was taken care of, that part of the problem is anyway. All right, that's about all I have for right now, and we'll get down to the Attorney's Report.
Okay, first thing on the agenda under my time is the joint MS4 Stormwater MOA. We met on this last month, and then you all had a chance to, well, as a result of the meeting last month, we provided some comments back to the WRCC. They were fairly receptive, they accepted a number of those changes, some with modifications, some they weren't so fond of, but nevertheless, obviously, they took some time to look at them and consider them. I then reported back to you, and you had a chance to talk about that at the work session. I think the objective this evening is to answer any questions. I have a few things I wanted to comment on, but in the end, I think we're at a point where council is ready to appoint its voting member of the WRCC, which has been the mayor, and I assume the mayor, you know, is willing and desires to continue in that role. But what we found was that there's no recent appointment in any of our minutes, at least since Mayor Jones took office during this term, so it would be a good idea to bring that current. The WRCC's been around for several years. And then, secondly, to approve the agreement, or not approve it, whatever your wishes are, and if it is to approve it, then to authorize the mayor to sign it. My understanding is that the WRCC's plan is to still meet, and then that rolls into a presentation to the county commissioners, and with the potential that everybody would be in a position to sign it within the next few days. As far as the, the agreement itself, you know, I thought it was helpful that the WRCC was willing to add the ability for the town to withdraw before the joint permit is issued. You know, one of my main concerns was that we were signing an agreement before we really saw what that permit meant. It's still a little unclear as to timing, as to how, when that's going to come out, and how that's going to be released, but at least it creates this ability to kind of step back if this all doesn't work out the way everybody, you know, thinks it will, but we're still waiting for EPA and MDE to speak, speak on the, on the town permit. So I thought that was, in my mind, a major improvement to what the town was being asked to do. Some of the other things were sort of either stylistic changes or sort of cleanup housekeeping matters, some were accepted, some were not. The county's insertion of language where they could veto the prioritization of projects came back out, so that was something that went in, we weren't sure why, we questioned it, they took it out. So now, basically, the WRCC, as it is composed, will be making those decisions, which gives the towns more clout in how those projects get designated. Again, it's a little unclear how all that's going to play out, but at least the formalities in place for the towns to have a stronger say in that, and a right to object or accept the things that don't seem, you know, quite right as far as the treatment of the town. Some of the changes that WRCC would not support revolve around the fact that, that some of the towns enforce their own stormwater management, and we've talked about that some, and it really looks like the county representatives want to be very careful not to take on any additional enforcement responsibility. And it seems like in three or four areas where we were looking to soften that language a little bit, that seems to be where they draw the line. So again, as time goes on, I think that's going to cause the town to think about whether it can, you know, continue to enforce its own stormwater management, or perhaps do what some of the other towns have done, which is to turn that enforcement mechanism over to the county. I don't think that's a decision we have to make right now, but it will play out over time, and we just need to sort of keep that in the back of our minds. The annual expense on the Cherry Branch project, we did in fact get the credit, and the dollar figures were adjusted, so certainly worth bringing that to their attention. Over the course of the five years, it's about a, almost a $16,000 to the, to the betterment of the town in terms of what it's going to have to make in the annual payments. And then, one thing that I guess we've, we've never gotten an answer to, and I don't suppose we will, is we did ask for some sort of financial accounting as to how much town residents are paying through their general tax bills towards this, which is, to my way of thinking anyway, and I think council's with me on this, is above and beyond the 20% that they're going to have to pay as part of this, this separate fee. I don't know what the answer is, I don't know whether the answer would be very enlightening or not, you know, maybe it's just a few percentage points. Maybe the 2080 deal is, got enough, you know, cushion in it that it wouldn't make that much difference, or it would still result in an equitable arrangement, but it, I guess it, it would be nice to know what that, what that number is, and again, we got no response to that. So with that, I know you all have had a chance to talk about, you know, some of my comments. I don't know if there's anything left to discuss, or if you have any questions we can talk about.
Yeah, we, we have another WRCC meeting this Wednesday, a regular meeting for the month, and then Thursday night will be the joint meeting with the commissioners, and as the way it seems right now, last week, and as of tonight, all the other towns are giving authority for their mayors to go ahead and sign the MO, MOA, the way it is with the 80/20, because it's going to be the cheapest route for all the towns to go with this route, rather than try to do all the mitigation on their own. It's a heck of a lot cheaper for us to go that route. I still, they still haven't convinced me that it's the fair way to go, but my suggestion, three years ago, when they talked about this, didn't go very far, because my suggestion was that they should not have gave the tax breaks they gave through the county, and they could have took that money and paid the whole thing theirself, and none of us would be going through this. But, you know, it looks good they gave a tax break, take it out of one hand and put it in the other, now we have to come up with the money to put it back there, so. We're going to have to show it on our, what are, on our sewer bills to get back what we're going to be paying for that every year. It starts out, I think, the first year is 11,000-something, and it goes up 5% for five years, which is still cheaper than the $72,000 a year they first talked about. No way we could have afforded that, so the 80/20 deal is a good deal for the residents of the town of Union Bridge. So, unless, I think everybody's had a chance to read over that, if you're inclined to make that approval, we need a motion, and make sure it's in the minutes.
Address the first issue.
I make a motion that we appoint Perry to the WRCC and give him signing power.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's on the floor to give me...
Appoint you to the commission and give you the signing power.
To the commission and sign power, okay. And we have a second. Is there any questions to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes, motions carried. Now, the second part for the MOA. Are you want, you meant for it to be that way?
No, the second, the second motion is for the MRA and the MOA, and that is that I make a motion that we enter into the MOA with the county and other municipalities.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to enter into MOA.
I'll second that.
After second by Amy. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried. And I don't know whether to thank you for that or not, but it's been a long three years on that, so.
You're doing a good job, so I thought we'd keep you there.
Once a month, at least two hours every month, so, but it's a good committee.
And we'll keep an eye out for the permit and see what that looks like, and see that it does in fact play out the way it's expected to. And if it does not, we'll come back and we'll, you know, we'll reevaluate that. So I think that's all we need to do at this point.
And as of last month's meeting, every month, they will be giving a update of all the projects that are taking place in Carroll County and what the next steps are, whose project's going next, and what the costs are. And then, the one thing to be aware of, regardless of where those projects are being taken care of in Carroll County, it still gives all of Carroll County and all the municipalities those credits that they need toward what they have to meet on this new permit. So that's a big help. Okay?
Okay, the next item on my time is update on the MDE water appropriation permit. You all should have gotten a copy of a letter dated October 7th, 2014, from Christine Nagel at MDE. Really not a lot of new information here, because we did get a letter previous to this. They apparently have accepted the water conservation plan that we submitted. You know, that's a nice aspirational document, but it's going to require some follow-up over time, so at least we've met that obligation. They've asked for a meeting to talk about some of the adjustments that are being done with the water. I talked to Dawn earlier, this reference to this 2 million gallon adjustment, we're not sure what they're getting at there, but I guess that's what the meeting will be about, so I know Dawn's in the process of coordinating that. In the third paragraph, they refer to the Maryland Rural Water Association contacting the town. I understand that happened. They did some surveying of the water system, found a very minor leak, but I guess that any little bit helps, so that did in fact occur. Dawn, was there to be follow-up to that, or was that just a one-time?
Visit.
That was one-time visit. There's still discussion about the backup water source at the Phillips Well. I believe what will probably happen is that the permit will be renewed with the condition that will require the town to either show that it has less water demand than previously anticipated based on the finding leaks, or have to do something to bring the Phillips Well a little closer to operational. It sounds in here, just reading between the lines, that there may be something short of actually hooking it up and bringing it online, you know, on a regular basis, but I guess that's going to play out a little bit over time, one step at a time. If we can solve some of the leakage problems, then the Phillips Well becomes less of an acute issue with them, it would appear. But again, they are speaking in terms of renewing the permit, and I believe they promised this in their last letter, that a list of the proposed permit conditions will be submitted for the town's review. I assume they'll give us a chance to comment on those. We haven't seen that yet, and I'm thinking now that maybe because they want to have this meeting, that they may be deferring that until they speak with us and take a look at the numbers. And I know Dawn is also in the process of contacting Geraldine Danbraville about, I guess, questions about the figures on the audit and some of the adjustments that are being made. And you all may know that another irregularity was found in one of the meters since the last time, so that's helping, it's creating the impression that, well, it's accounting for water usage that we weren't able to account for before. So that's a help. I'm not sure how much of a help yet, but significant. Okay. So stay tuned on that. There's more to come, but it slowly seems to be getting a little bit more in focus. That's all I have.
Okay, Jared.
All right, I'll start with a few lighter things here, and we'll get on to some MEA discussion. The first thing I'd like to point out is, a couple of days ago, we got the award letter in for USDA grant in the amount of $37,500 for our municipal vehicle, the multi-purpose vehicle that we applied for last year. So that is good news. Tomorrow, Dawn and I and Dawn have a meeting with Brandy, who is our contact at USDA. They'll be here at the town office in the morning to go over some of the paperwork and conditions and things like that. So if there's anything to really be updated, you can ask Dawn tomorrow or give me a call at any time. I'd be happy to answer your questions. Is there any questions on that specific project at this time? Next, just to point out, the MEMA application for the emergency backup generators with a water treatment plant has been completed. I gave Perry a rough draft. There's also a rough draft here in the town office for anyone to look at if they want to. If there are no comments or questions about it, I'm hoping to get the attachments and all the documents ready to be mailed out by Friday at the latest. So as long as there are no comments from the mayor or anybody on the council, then that's my plan. So if anybody does want to take a look at that, Perry has a copy, or I will give Dawn an extra copy to keep here at the town office. We also received the first draft of our plans and drawings for the trail extension. These are Dawn's plans that he wanted relatively close to how he wanted the trail to be. We did have to make some minor changes because of the wetlands. I know we've talked a lot about that over the last few months now. That's given us some problems, but I think we worked it out pretty well to where Dawn's happy, hoping you guys will be happy to take a look at the plans. There are three copies here at the town office. And let me know what you think. It's, for the funding that we have, it's pretty much the only place we can put it at this time, but I think it's going to look really, really good. It'll give us that loop that we wanted, which is, I know it's important to Dawn, I know it's important to a lot of the residents here in town, so I think it'll be a great project. If it looks okay to everyone, I already sent a copy to MDE to take a look at, because our wetlands and waterways application needs to be approved by them. But all they needed were the plans, because we already filled out the application, so. So if there's any questions on that, after looking at the plans, again, just give me a call, let me know. All right. Lastly, the MEA application and grant. We were approved for $37,500 as well for MEA. I know you guys met at your work session meeting about it and discussed it in a little more detail. I know there were a few additional questions that you had regarding it, maybe some comments. Just to kind of put, you know, coming from my perspective, I did talk to Sean, who was one of our contacts at MEA. He did say that we can make changes to the resolution. I know that was one of the bigger issues that we were having, was the language actually in it, kind of discussing the specific percentages that we had to have, that we had to meet in a certain amount of years. We can make changes to that. I recommend, I think it would be a good idea to do. At least take a look at it. It's only two pages. It's not going to be that long to do. A lot of the language in it is pretty basic. I think there's really just one specific section that, from what I can tell, you guys were very uncomfortable with, and that would be a specific section that I think we can make most changes to. If you did feel comfortable with the changes, we could send that in and get approved. And I know that was the biggest issue, and I think that can be pretty easily taken care of with, you know, just a couple of changes. So I know I was not at the meeting, at the work session meeting, so is there any other specific issues you've had with it?
The fact that it clearly states on it that it cannot be used for doors and windows and other things like that, which is what we put in our initial request for money, so I'm not sure how we can use the money if we can't use it for what we asked for it for.
Right, and I was, yeah, I'll jump right into that now, then. It's not that we can't use it for windows and doors.
It's what it says.
Well, we can. I've already, I've already talked to them about that. We can use them for windows and doors. However, I kind of understand what the state's talking about, to where they don't prefer, that's not the first thing that they'd like to fund. And I can see why, because in a lot of ways, that's not going to be the best energy-saving project to do. However, I believe in our situation, it is at least one of the best projects to do to the building.
Okay.
Now, that's where I'm getting into our audit. That's where we could have really found out what, in a list form, what the best projects would be up there, including the windows and doors. The company that we hired to give us our report was unable to complete the audit, and I can get into the major detail with that with you guys if you would like, but, so they're not going to be able to do it.
I still have more questions on the actual grant thing, because the way it comes across, it's for energy saving in the form of electricity. Okay, the only thing electric up there basically is the lights and possibly some of the appliances in the kitchen.
Well, it's, it's, it's usage, though. So, you know, the heating and the cooling that I know escapes a lot due to things like the doors and the windows are big, a big.
The heat is not electric.
It doesn't have to be. The point is, the point is, okay, so if the door, say for the door, I know this is the big one for you guys, so the doors and windows, if they were to be replaced, how much energy savings, period, in the whole building that would save, I think would be at the top of the list, along with the lighting. That was another big one that the engineer was talking about. Do you see what I mean with the differences?
I see what you mean. I understand the difference between total energy savings and electrical energy savings, but the impression that I got from the things that I was reading, that with the audit being performed on, electrical energy savings, it doesn't seem like, it doesn't make, it doesn't seem like it matches, what we want to do matches what they want us to accomplish.
Right.
Okay? Because if they're doing an audit, and they're doing the audit based on electrical usage, which is what it seems like, especially since that's what they want us to send them, is our electrical usage, okay, replacing the doors and the windows will not make any difference in our electrical usage.
Well, it was an energy report altogether. It wasn't just for specific electrical devices that were being, and I sent all this information to Sean, who was our contact, who we all met with, and he knows about the windows and doors. He knows that we don't, we have oil for heating. He knows all that, so all that has been discussed with that, as far as the usage of the grant.
Okay, it just seems like that what we're being given in writing is not matching what we're being told, and before we can actually do something, it needs to be put in writing.
Right, I understand, yeah, I understand. And that's where I think the big issue is, especially with the resolutions that I'm discussing. So, you know, if it's, if the big issue is, like I said, the language that we're uncomfortable with, if that could be changed and the town would be comfortable with it, I mean, I don't, I don't see a problem, you know, as far as how you want to spend the money.
But until it's put in writing that we can spend the money that way, there's no use to even go forward with those, what are they called, the things that they want us...
The resolutions.
The resolutions that they want us to put in, you know, to enact, because until it's in writing, we can't actually agree that we're going to use this, because until we know that we can use it the way we want to use it, it's not any good to us.
Right.
Edgar, you're in charge of the community center. What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is we just drop this grant, because it seems to me that down the road, we're going to have to upgrade to all our buildings and a lot of the things, and the town, they don't have that kind of money to spend at this time. And I think it's not the grant that I thought it was supposed to be to start with, and I think we've been talking this thing over, so my feeling is, and we probably need a motion, that we just do away with this grant, because I can't see where it's going to benefit us that much up there, to go through everything, all the requirements they want, and we know that there's stuff in the other buildings that's going to have to be upgraded, and it's going to be expensive for us. And the only way we can do that is we're going to have to raise the taxes, and we don't want to do that. So that's my opinion.
Absolutely. If you don't mind me commenting on that, I completely understand where you're coming from on that, but I think, again, I'm coming back to this language, and I understand your concerns as far as all the other buildings, the town doesn't want to put funding in to upgrade other buildings if you're not ready to do that. And I think that's where changing this comes into play, to where we won't have to meet that, we won't have to go after these other buildings until, unless we have additional funding where the town feels comfortable doing it. And so that's what I'm kind of getting at, as far as, as far as the language in the resolution itself, which I know is what you guys were talking about after you read it.
I don't really believe it. I mean, because if you know one thing, then you come back and tell us something different. Some, we, they tell us one thing, you tell us something, but that's my opinion. I mean, it's up to the council.
So Edgar, was that your motion that we table this? I second that motion.
Now, how, you're stating that you want to, at this time, you want to table the ME, the Maryland Energy Assistance Grant? You want to table that whole grant for now? Is that, is that what you're inclined, that your motion is?
You'll have to, because if we, we'll have to give the money back. We can't, we can't wait on it, so.
They're away with it, they're away with it completely. So, okay, you want to, you want to restate your motion so that we make sure we have it?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we do away with this grant.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to do away with the MEA grant, and we have a second. Is there questions on that?
Just one. Have we put out funds that we're going to need to reimburse them for the grant, for things that were done?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Have we put out funds for things that were done towards this grant that we will have to reimburse so they get the whole full amount back?
No, no.
No, okay.
We have put funds out, but we will not have to, we just, we just eat their funds, there are funds.
Okay.
So there's no reimbursement back to them for anything? Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Any further questions? All those in favor of returning the grant? Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes? Okay. I think ayes won, so whatever you have to do there, Jared, I think...
Thank you. So just lastly, please take a look at the application that I gave Perry, and there's another one here in the town office. Let me know what you think. Take a look at the plans that Arrow gave us for the trail. Let me know what you think about those. I think, I think the trail's going to look really good, so. And again, I have that meeting tomorrow with USDA, so if there's any big, anything that kind of comes up that's big, Dawn will have the information, or please give me a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is public comments and concerns. Anyone in the audience have anything for us this evening? We're going to move right down to committee reports. I just want to mention a couple of things I forgot. I sat here and take my notes. If anybody's interested in going to just see how, unless you see them on the cable, how the other towns have their regular... how the other towns have their regular monthly meetings. Had our managers meeting last week, some of the managers have invited other people to come to their towns to see how their meetings go. We have a very, rather short meeting compared to some. Some are two hours, and some are four hours, and some are five-hour meetings a night, so if you want to go and sit in on some of those other meetings, then so you're more than welcome to sit in and watch, and sit in the back and leave whenever you want to, but it may be something interesting to do sometime if you want to catch a meeting in Tawnytown, or Sykesville, or Westminster, or Mount Airy. Some of them are very interesting, so.
Do we have a list somewhere that tells us when they are, where they are? That would be nice to have.
Yeah, we can get them. But if anybody wants to go to any of them, it's quite interesting. And we have a problem on Main Street, right in front of 12 North Main, where it's a really bad dip in the street. I talked to the State Highway District Engineer last week. We have a new district engineer in Frederick, and I talked to him, and he said that he would get somebody out to look at that. I told him my concern was there's water lines under the street, and that dip's getting to be a pretty good-sized dip there now. You'd have a difference of about, from the regular blacktop, there's probably about three-inch drop, so. He said that he'd hope to get somebody out there this week, so they can make some arrangements and take care of that before cold weather really got cold, so. And we want to inspect those lines when they cut that section out of the street and see what we have down there, just to make sure there's no leaks there. So, just to mention that. And we'll start with Ellen.
The Environmental Advisory Council meeting on the 15th was canceled. They didn't have enough to do. The Solid Waste Advisory Council did meet on the 15th. They're discussing, KCI's been hired to do a report for the commissioners as to what they should do with our landfill and that kind of thing. That is supposed to go to the commissioners. Not sure whether it was last week or this week, they were supposed, or no, after our next meeting in November. We are going down to the Howard County Composting Center to check that out on the 23rd as an option, some of the things we can do in Carroll County. And I have a meeting on the 22nd for the MML Convention, our Communications Committee, and we'll be going over things that towns can do for Maryland Government Works Month in November. And I think that's about it.
Laura?
I don't have anything for this one.
Edgar?
I talked to Larry, Pat Ryan, about getting a new sign up the center. He was going to take the picture out here, and went up the center to take the picture and set his camera down. Somebody took his camera. So, now he's going to get in. So, as soon as he gets back to me, he had a couple of different companies that he can go check with, and he's going to, it'd be a wooden sign, won't be a brickman like out here, but he said the wood would last us a long time, because the type of wood they use for that type of signs. So, it'd be something like the one out front here. So, as soon as we get some prices, I'll bring it back.
Okay. Thank you. Amy?
I have had two calls since our last meeting about water and sewer. One was a billing issue, which has been resolved, and the other was a leak on Main Street, which has been fixed. And we will not be having a planning and zoning meeting this month.
All right. Christmas tree lighting. I know we're going to do that. Well, we're not. That goes through the business association, I guess, but the town has, usually has a representative there. It's going to be December the 3rd this year, on a Wednesday night. Okay. So, Christmas tree lighting on the town square, December the 3rd, so. Anybody wants to come to that? Okay, is there anything else for the good of the town tonight? Joe, you have anything for us? Okay?
I'm just here to listen to you.
Okay.
I'll let you know when I'm ready.
You're going to mention the change in the meetings for next month?
Oh, yeah. Next month, we will not have a work session, and our council meeting will be November the 17th. It'd be a week early due to the following week is Easter and...
Thanksgiving.
See, I'm really rushing this thing along. Thanksgiving, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You know, I'm just rushing the year right along, you know, so. So, it'll be Thanksgiving that following week, and we're going to let everybody go home and get ready for that, and get your Thanksgiving dinners and your turkeys ready, and so we'll have an early meeting next month. Is there anything else for us tonight? Hearing none? Line for adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor, eyes?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried. Thank you very much.